Okay, want to welcome everybody. Sean, let's have a roll.
October 22nd, 2018 City Council Meeting. Mayor Mike Oaks.
Present.
I'm Clerk Treasurer Sean Durkin. Attorney Leader Greathouse. Councilmember Brian Hatfield. Mayor Jack Kelly.
Here.
Jerry Lamb.
Present.
Connie Rayburn.
Present.
Trent Wesner.
Here.
Assistant Clerk Treasury to Elmore is absent. Mayor, that is roll call.
Okay, that's... Is that the approval of the minutes for October 9?
I'd make a motion, we accept the minutes.
Connie made the motion to approve it. Any second? Brian seconded it. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Uh, moving on here, we'll have to, uh, the ARC funding request, Denny Hatton.
First, I got some good news to tell you. Doctor called me last Thursday night about 9:30, between 9 and 9:30. I don't know if all of you know Jack Hatton or not. He's had brain surgery. Said, "I want to tell you," said, "Your brother just ate four spoons of mashed potatoes, eat a thing of pudding, drunk a cup of coffee and a little water." So that's... That's a miracle. But originally, I'm here. I had Mike Oak and you, my visitor last year at that ARC dinner. Uh, I'm feeding... This year, I'm feeding 200 kids at the parish hall at the Catholic Church, underprivileged kids in James County. Last year, you helped me. I just want to know if you'll help me again this year. My view is there. Judge Webster come and seen it. It's... I've had people say it's probably just as good as the church dinner. So, and you need... It's December 11th at 5:30. If you want to come out and look at it, what we do. They decorate the halls up. It's unbelievable. You more than welcome to come and see it. So I'm asking you.
This is really a worthwhile event that Denny puts on for all these... For all these kids and adults. It's a worthwhile... Anybody that has not been to... Had a chance to look to see it, it's really worth it. To see what he does for these... For these underprivileged children and adults.
Do you know what we gave you last year, Denny? Was it 400?
300.
Okay.
It's whatever you want to add to it. I appreciate it. We didn't do as good this year on the two-year-old drive that we usually do at the Walmart. So I agree. I have Country Chevrolet helps me, Mike Garlick helps me, Judge Webster helps me a little. I have a few people that donate a little to it, so. Costs about $1,200, $1,300 for the dinner. Then I have $500 with the door prizes I give away. I give away boom boxes and CDs. It's just... It's just unreal. So you come and see it.
Everybody gets something.
Everybody, yeah. Everybody gets a Christmas present. Gary Driver's my Santa Claus. They take pictures with him. So, he could tell you all about it. It's special.
Well, I'd make a motion, and I know I checked with Sean's, we have the money, that we give you $500.
Connie makes a motion to give $500? Jack seconded that?
I get the ARC at James County.
Alrighty. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0.
It's a wonderful thing. I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you. Thank you, Denny.
And while we've got that before, because I don't see it on the list, um, the coordinating council in our packet asks for funding too. And they put out the Christmas food baskets and, um, it... In her letter, it takes like $20,000. And we've supported this, I think, just about every year. So that is another cause I'd like to do. And Sean, do you know what we gave last year?
I don't know what last year was.
Okay. Because I think with that one, um, I'd like to see us maybe give $1,500, and that would be my motion to support this. $1,500? We usually give a thousand or more.
I thought it was 1,200, but I didn't...
1,200? It was probably... Might have been that, so.
I realize it's a big cause, but I don't think we gave a thousand, I think $1,500.
Okay. Well, if we gave 1,200 last year, how about 1,200 this year?
Pardon me?
If we gave 1,200 last year, would we give 1,200 this year? Okay, let's go with that. I'll make a motion for 1,200.
Connie made the motion to give the coordinating council 1,200? And Jack seconded that? All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Alright, thank you for that.
Before you move on to... Are you skipping number one? Because I think some people were here for it, so I think we need to know if we're not going to discuss it.
The housing study, the rezon request for... I skipped that because...
My understanding that her re...
They took it off of...
...asked to be taped or actually...
Yeah, it's tabled.
Yeah, she's on the table.
Okay.
So I don't think there's any action to take on that.
That's why I said...
And that's fine. Like I said, I just knew there were some people here for it, and we said no.
Uh, go on to the housing study for the HPG.
I'm head of press, like I'm with HPG Network. And, um, we had put forth a proposal, um, several months ago. We concluded some work with our housing study back in May. We came and shared about that and produced a housing strategy for the community that laid out, um, a proposal for moving forward with the housing strategy itself. And what that is, is basically, as we looked at the community with the steering committee and the sites that the housing strategy looked at, um, it made sense to identify a vehicle to actually move forward and actually do development. And so our proposal and working with the steering committee was to... I think what we're excited about is that there is market potential. And the last time I got to talk to you all, we got to share about just how much market potential there is in the downtown and also in areas away from downtown. And so, um, looking at opportunities to revitalize the downtown is mission critical here. You have a lot of opportunity. You've got vacant buildings. You've got building owners who are reinvesting, um, and so even ahead of all of this. And so, taking this next step will actually create a catalytic effect. Um, and again, to figure out what it's going to take to redevelop and then work to get a developer or a development team assembled to actually undertake the projects.
So are you here asking for...
I'm sorry. Uh, so the proposal, I don't know who else has seen the proposal, but the proposal is that we would work...
I have.
Okay. Um, that we would work with you for the next 12 to 18 months to assemble at least one project with the steering committee and redevelopment commission, and it would be a $50,000 contract.
And... So you did the housing study and you came up with what specifically?
Yeah. So the housing study was really designed as a market potential discussion. So who's moving around the area? Who's moving to the area? Who's moving away? And the idea is, if you're going to actually see a net increase in your population, housing's got to be at the epicenter of the strategy. And so, looking at quantifying how many renters, how many buyers, um, want to live in North Vernon and who would buy or rent here, um, should you build the appropriate housing, was the focus of that. And so when we came and shared that study with everyone, our next step was to go and find what we call a partner, a nonprofit partner, that's going to actually help you to do site assembly to start those development projects. And based on the scan that was done by the steering committee, they asked us to come back with a proposal on how we could help with that.
And so, the steering committee, have they recommended... Who's up? Ryan, are you on the steering committee here?
Yes, I'm on the steering committee. We met with them prior to this, uh, our meeting here. We had a meeting. We discussed the next step to take forward in, you know, to develop these residential housing in, uh, North Vernon. And the next step is, uh, we're going to hire these guys as our people to coordinate and drive the bus for us, pretty much.
That's your recommendation?
That's what... Yes.
Okay. Steering committee's recommendation.
Where would the funding come from? Where would the $50,000 funding come from for the contract?
Our tax money.
Was that coming from the redevelopment commission or is it coming from the city council?
It would come from the city's coffers, city council. So there may be a need for additional preparation of the road, um, or as often happens, you know, there's money we can move around, uh, and transfer money from one fund to another. So, um, there's two options to funding some.
Would that... The first payment come due before the year's end? So it has to come out of this year's budget or is it for next year's budget?
I hope that payment could be due after January 1.
Okay. That's... I guess that was going to be my question. Do we have it in this year's...
I'm confident in next year's, this year, well, we'll take a week and see if it comes through. Maybe we can do a 50/50 impartial payment. And then this year, we'll see what's available. Is the year 1 there?
You know, just to express a little bit of how excited we are to continue working with you. We've continued all along, even though our contract to do what we were here to do had expired. We're here as your partner. HPG Network works all over and, um, we'll work with you in any way we need to. You have a very exciting opportunity here, we believe, and we're very invested in this. So we look forward to working with you if that's what you choose, um, but we're excited about what you have ahead of you regardless.
What is the scope of the $50,000 we spent on? The actual... Is it just more studies on the area?
No. No, this is actual development. So, you know, that is, when we came and, gosh, it's been, I think, since this time last year that we might have come before you, um, to start the initial project. And we rounded out, and what we talked about then, and we're still talking about now, is it's never been about the study. It's always been about how do we maximize your ability to take action on that study? We've seen a lot of communities that'll do the study and then it's really pretty and it gets shelved. For, on purpose, our studies are a PowerPoint presentation. Well, so in May, as we started looking at the next leg of our work, it was to look at who are we going to help learn how to do this? And, and, and working with the steering committee, that was when the determination was made, okay, we need you to come back and talk to us, not only about the study, but how do we move forward and partner with you? So our job will be to actually sort of be, um, an independent, but yet part of your operation to find the sites with the steering committee and the redevelopment commission, find the sites, do the investigative work on the sites. So if it's a building or a set of buildings, or if it's a, you know, a set of acres, find out what it's going to take to accomplish your vision there, put together the budget for that, and then determine how are we going to build the capital stack to make it happen, as if we were just part of your team. So that's the job we'll have, is to go out and put that together, bring back a viable project with some partners that can actually implement it. Now, there's going to be some investment that's needed on behalf of the community typically, whether that's helping to assemble or some other parts of it that where there's a difference between what the market is and maybe what it costs to construct. Um, but that's for you to look at and we'll talk about, and we'll help you with that.
The $50,000, that covers what you just went over, right?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
So is that like a year project or a two-year project or what's...
Actually, a 12 to 18 month project. So we'll be here for 18 months checking on it. Typically, this thing gets...
Another year, and you're going to come back as well? We need another $50,000.
Yeah. We will, we will work on this contract for 18 months with you. Typically, what happens during that time is we'll start looking to assemble the site. And again, we're working with your steering committee and your redevelopment commission to get site control, to do the investigative work, to figure out what that's going to cost to redevelop that, that package, build the development team, and hopefully, you know, you'll see at some point, uh, an opportunity for the community to look at a project to invest in, not another consultant contract.
Jack, we also talked with the TIFT, you know, about possibility of them, some of the areas we're looking at in the downtown area, also in the TIFT zone. And, you know, we're looking at possible funding from them for some of the cost of this project and everything. Once we, without, with it, talk to some real estate people, and without getting real into what we talked about, if they, you know, basically what we're doing is just hiring them to move forward in the project with the $50,000. So without getting into specifics about certain parcels or pieces of the property, you know, we make a motion that we proceed forward with the next phase of our involvement with HPG.
Okay, Brian made the motion to proceed forward. Uh, Jack seconded the motion.
So is that depending on how we get the finances and stuff, and you realize we may not get paid till...
That's, yes, that's fine.
Next year when we get the funding. Okay.
There's been a motion and a second? All in favor? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I have the first reading of ordinance 7... Or 975, sewer construction.
Council, I emailed you the 70-odd page full version of that. You should just have the cover page. Um, so this is the first reading of 975, this order, and it basically authorizes the issue of revenue bonds to pay for the construction of sewer to the most recently annexed area of the city. This project is being paid for by the redevelopment commission, but the council approves the ordinance authorizing the issuance of the bonds. So two weeks from now, we will have a second reading and potential adoption. It's my understanding that Larry won't be here two weeks from now, so you might be here. Okay. Uh, if you want, I don't know if you... Yes. You'll be here? Okay. Just going to encourage you to ask any questions or see if he had any issues with it, but if he's going to be here. It's pretty standard boilerplate for most of the other revenue bonds that we have. And of course, it needs done because by authorizing the annexation, of course, the sewer, the city's required to provide the services sewer to that area. So three years down the road, we're nearly there. Russell, you did just take bids at your last meeting, right? So we're... Projects moving forward?
Last meeting and... I'm familiar with the four bids.
This project will be financed by SRF through the Indiana Finance Authority. Again, I don't have anything else to add. So this will be on your agenda?
I've operated twice actually in the capacity. It discusses the fact that I think we have the city has three other outstanding bond issues. The redevelopment has a couple of others. Gives the authority to issue loan anticipation notes. They can go up, it authorizes the issuance of bonds up to $5 million. And then half of the contract is what the contract's going to look like if the state will... It's, it's pretty stable. I see no reason that we have to, by all, develop this property and provide the services. And so that's a step in the right direction.
Big first reading, that's the election, right?
Right.
Okay. Moving on to the second reading of ordinance 976, salary ordinance.
So also in front of you, we have the 2019 salary ordinance, uh, required by statute to be passed by November 1, with only a couple of the minor changes we discussed two weeks ago. I guess Jack and Trent weren't here two weeks ago. We kind of went over it and had the first reading. Uh, there were some suggestions and some tweaking, so I've made a couple minor changes. So if you have questions about the salary ordinance, or me, or anyone, department head that might be here, fine. If not, I would ask for a motion to approve ordinance 976.
I have some questions.
For me?
Well, or whoever it pertains to. I see here where most of the patrol officers are giving 2%, but this Sergeant Kipper's giving the 6%.
Either the chief could speak to that or I can't. He... The matrix, again, by the police department has not been changed at all, but basically what was approved. Uh, the police matrix has jumps about on certain years, and Officer Kipper just happens to be on that jump from year 15 to 16 that still has a substantial, uh, increase to it. Chief, if you want to add to that, or that sums it up?
When I came to the budget meeting, I flat overlooked something. All the employees, I kind of forgot that he was going from year 15 to 16. I don't know how far back we go, but there's built-in jumps. And the piece of that was, when we restructured, um, this back in 2014, we had to make a jump from year five, year 10, as they're both in five to six, five, 10, and 15. Otherwise, we don't want to bring the front end up, but if we didn't have those bumps in place, it will all come up at once with costs and work. And so, then the 7, 20, 17, the year 10, 15, 20, uh, or 5, 10, 15, they're all 4%. Now, last year, when we come in, we more or less did away with five, but, and we reduced the 10 year to 3%, but that 15 still has the 4% built in, and we're working on eventually probably taking those all the way out. But this year, there was no adjustment to the 10 or 15 year, just because I want that flexibility a little bit longer. So one and a half to the front, 4%, five and a half percent. He's the only one, just because he's in that transition year, and I overlooked it.
And when you check, the center's getting less, minus 1%?
Half of, half of 1%. Because he is, he is off the matrix. When we redid this, he had enough time and his position, he was so far off, for everybody else to basically beat him, would have caused a fortune. So I told him, when the matrix gets back to where he's on it, he'll have to be on it. And I just did the math, and I told him, it's 2023, and he assures me, you might still be around. So that's when he would catch that rate, that that rate, it's staying 1/2% every year. Eventually, it will catch, but it's going to be... He will have 1/2% indefinitely. If we put him on the matrix, probably be 5% or 6%. That's why he's kind of out there on the line.
He's out of luck.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. And then on the fire chief, 4%?
The fire chief, the...
We just gave him a...
The fire department matrix that you approved last year has increases 4% from year 1 to 5. So there was no increase or change to the, a matrix that was approved by council last year for any member of the fire department, to be honest with you, did.
So is that just cashing it up, Denny?
Cashing it up. I'm sorry.
Increase when last year, the matrix?
Yeah, we did, we did increase and change the front number last year to bring up the starting pay, uh, to a figure that we thought would attain more quality applicants and retain them as well. But the approved matrix then had the increase of 4% from year 1 to 5, 3% from 6 to 11, and then 2% from that one on.
And then there's several that pass zero?
Those are the four that we just hired a couple months ago. So until they get a year in, we're not going to give them their raise to year 2.
Some of the superintendents, I look on here, Russell's a 1%. The office manager's 2. The water superintendent is 4%. And the golf superintendent is 5%. Why is some of these 1 and some of these 4 up?
The short answer is, is that most of the 1%'s will be people who have been employed for the furthest amount of time. Again, the idea was to bring the front end up, similar to what the chief was just talking about with what we've done over the last couple of years with the police department, to give larger increases to those who have been here a shorter amount of time. And so you'll see Russell has 1% because he's old and he's been here a long time. You know, as far as the golf was just the requested raised by the department head, uh, another large increase from the water happens to be because that person was also just assigned a foreman position, which comes with a little extra money on the matrix. So you'll see, um, really the la... This is the third year in a row now where the percentages of increase are all over the board instead of standard. Two years ago, it was the police department, when we changed the matrix and brought up the front number, that those on the police were getting a higher percentage. Last year, it was the fire, and this year, it's more the utilities. Again, trying to raise the front end number to increase quality applicants and, or increase the...
Right. But I see the superintendents are the ones who's making the most in their departments, and they're the ones getting the most raises.
So specifically, are you talking about the water superintendent?
I'm talking about mostly the fire chief, the, uh, water superintendent, and the golf superintendent. Whereas the other superintendents, the office manager was a 2%. With Rick, pardon?
Well, you'll see that the, like, the fire chief and the firefighters, the lieutenants, all three of the lieutenants are all at 4%. The, the drivers and the assistant chiefs, um, are on a separate matrix, if you will. They're just the standard 1, 2, 3% that we were giving to employees outside of a matrix. 3% if you've been here 10 years or less, 2% from year 11 to 20, and 1% for over 21.
It just seems odd that some superintendents are getting a 1% and some are getting 4s and 5s.
Well, again, we just ran into, I mean, the conversation in the past was, again, so not to publicly single Russell out here, but a lot of it was, a lot of Russell's pay is based more on years of service, of course, at this time. When you've been here that long and you get a couple percent, you're just going to work your way up. And I thought that our discussions and budgets before were, if we give everybody a 2% raise across the board, then the guy that makes the most money will continue to get the biggest raise dollar-wise, and the person that makes the least money will get the less, the smallest raise every year, dollar-wise, and the gap between them continues to grow. And that's what I thought we were trying to eliminate, so we were...
That's what I'm saying. Now, the superintendents make the most, and they got the largest raise, and they're...
Well, Russell should be 1%.
Okay. With the exception of Russell and Rick, specifically, talking about our fire chief, our golf director, and our water superintendent.
The, the, both the, the three office workers in the utility and the two superintendents are not on the matrix. Those positions do not exist on the matrix. So their increases are, I guess, more random, if you will. Uh, Russell, I don't know off the top of my head why Will's, or why the water superintendent is 4%. Was there a reason behind that?
I think that Will is making less than what the former superintendent...
Oh, much less than what the former superintendent was making.
Superintendent didn't get, superintendent position didn't get a 4% raise. It's actually $5,000 less than it was last year.
So perhaps the increase was based more off the fact that when I figured this, you know, he wasn't the superintendent all of this year. He was just recently named the superintendent.
Did he get an increase in pay when he became superintendent?
Yes.
At what rate? At the old superintendent's rate or...
He's, he's been... Former superintendent was making somewhere around $57,000 for the last year.
Okay. Robin, why do you need 5% rates?
Because he needed. Because I think where I brought that job for 124 years, where it was.
So how much of a raise did you get last year?
Two. Same as everybody, well, everybody was up to 20%. It was from 2 to 20, 200,000 last year.
You've taken on more responsibilities and stuff too, haven't you? I think in the last year than...
Well, I still achieve a lot.
Right. I was thinking that...
That's funny. That hire to be paid, you need to do it tonight.
Yeah, I was thinking he had like an assistant, and then she's not there, and so you're doing all that as well.
Period. Time's running out. Be so cool. Just let you guys go. And that's not recording, but it's what we bring in, it's how we get our raises.
How far are you at that this year versus last year?
Uh, right now, we have brought in $48,000. We've spent, uh, $209,400. We brought in $342,000. With memberships still... With memberships still being.
Does that account for-
I have three hundred and thirty-five thousand to reach out on.
Should I account for what he has in there?
I think Sean's worked really hard and worked well with the department heads and stuff with this and, you know, yeah, disparities that when I first started, and like he said, I mean, the ranges were so far and stuff. And this is bringing it, I think, more controllable and stuff, so. I think we're going to see like different percentages and stuff just based on years and what job duties and-
Maybe this is going off the subject a little bit, but the insurance, uh, we did, we are helping out all the employees with insurance. For this year, the ninety percent, which should bring them about two hundred dollars more a month. Yeah, close.
Depending on the policy they have, if you are on a family policy, then yes, it would be a, an increase to your, you bring in a couple hundred dollars more per month, yes. But obviously, the premium rate difference on single versus single with child and single with spouse and the family. So there's less of the benefit, the lower single cost, of course.
True. You know, our, our biggest asset to the city is our employees. And they do a wonderful job. I think we have quite the best city employees in the state. Uh, we need to take care of them because they are our biggest asset. Uh, there is a, with the increases in pay for all the factories that's coming in and so forth, uh, cities will have a hard time matching that. And I think, you know, we need to take a look at this. The biggest thing, I think, is what they look at is insurance when they come to work for somebody. And it looks to me like the city is offering just about the best insurance package, health insurance package out there. Uh, and on top of that, I would like to see, we took away their HSA from them. And I would like to see adding to that, like fifty dollars a month for them just to help retain our employees and to thank them for the good job they are doing for the city. I think we can afford that, can't we?
Yeah, what's the hell is you coming up?
I think about four, four thousand a month.
Uh, we've got how many? We've got seventy-five, fifty, fifty employees on the policy.
Okay.
Fifty-five, twenty-five hundred.
It'll be about twenty-five thousand for that year. But this is what we're stating at.
Right, we, we took that off, but for, just again, the, the jump from seventy-five to ninety percent is a hundred, hundred fifty thousand dollars of increase to the city's cost for insurance. And so we eliminated the HSA as a, as a way to offset that additional cost, knowing that the benefit of ninety percent power obviously is what you're given in HSA. You know, I told employees that it's certainly, uh, going to be my goal to see how this goes in, in nineteen and see if we can bring the same debt. Uh, if, if you find that now's the time, you don't want to eliminate it completely and wanting to give extra amount of dollars to, uh, to HSA for those on the policy, that's certainly, uh, an option you have.
Can't wait for it.
We, we can't next year, okay? And I only mean that by, just by saying, okay, so let's say in the past, it was here to, it was seven fifty for a single and a thousand for an employee and thousands, fifteen hundred for a family. So I, I, I just mean that if you wanted to say employees on the plan were still going to give five hundred to everyone just for some seat money, we can afford that next year. With the caveat that, again, with the extra increase and premium, if we have people who weren't on the policy that jump over, or we continue, or, or if there's changes, then I, I certainly couldn't say we, I would, I wouldn't assure employees we could afford that from two thousand twenty and beyond. But I could assure the council now we can afford it in two thousand nineteen.
I think though, with giving them the increase in the insurance and then with the raises, like we're very, very, I, I don't know, I don't want to say generous, but very good to our employees. And I, like you, I think they're so valuable to us. I'd make a motion, we accept ordinance number nine seventy-six.
I think that what Jack's talking about in this ordinance are two separate topics, so I think at first we could discuss the ordinance.
Yeah.
And that was required by statute. And you could go ahead, Jack, and make your motion regarding the other, or you could, uh, we could put that on the agenda for two weeks, and I'll review the budget and see what we stand. Honestly, our open enrollment for next year is scheduled from November first and November second. So I will know the amount of employees who have jumped on and would have a better feel for the financial ability to, to create safety at HSA next year after those two days.
I'd like to get out of the agenda after you, after the insurance comes in, until it's on and off.
Okay.
In November, whatever, anybody who can get a word in.
Connie, did you make a motion?
Yes, I'm going to make the motion, we accept ordinance nine seventy-six.
Connie made motion to accept salary ordinance nine seventy-six.
As is Connie?
Yes.
I'll second Connie's motion.
Trying to second that?
No, we have a discussion.
I can have a discussion.
Now you have the question.
Connie, are, these are raises, increase, doesn't include the, uh, the money that we're going to give on the insurance that we're talking about?
And that's not, no.
We've all agreed to do that, there's no problem. This doesn't reflect that.
That's not, and again, as we stand now, it will only be applicable to thirteen or fourteen out of our seventeen employees. But you're correct, that's not. So in that happens, it's not like-
I knew what you were talking about.
The only thing I have a problem with on the ordinance, they look at the park director, the two percent raise and fourteen years of service is less than, is barely, is less than twenty-five dollars more than our golf director with four years of service. And we started off the golf thing, it was under forty thousand a year for the entire salary. And now, where we're at now, we're looking at an excess of fifty thousand.
No, shoot the messenger, I'm just putting it on the-
Just saying, you know.
Why it's been requested by the office manager, just kind of giving me the look, but I didn't do it.
Is everyone else on the board okay with that?
I, I think one thing with golf, or it's just the growth of it as you look, you know, uh, department heads, it seems like the, the newer they are, as the department head did two percent last year, I don't think it was enough. So maybe if it's more taken out for last years, you know, that, that golf course has been bringing in, it looks better, it never has. And I know that is one of them jobs that you're there a lot longer than a, a standard nine to five or, or whatever it is. Now, I'm not going to say that can stay on that track after this, or it can do that, but, but that is what I'm okay with. You know, the department heads, I feel already, we, we always take the department heads' recommendation for their employees. The department heads are ones we've always got to figure out. And again, being on here three years, my third budget, I still will try to figure out this matrix. And it seems like we always take that matrix, but that's imposed major sometimes, uh, I'm trying to wrap my head around the way it's supposed to be.
Well, you gotta understand though, the department heads are on call twenty-four seven or three sixty-five, so.
These two, the department heads, it's a salary position. All right.
Call for the question, all in favor? Motion carries. Two.
Two, four, and then how many again?
Two is four, all, uh, those opposed?
I'm only opposed if I like to study a little more, and I don't-
All right, three, three, three opposed.
So when do we have to?
By November first.
And if we don't have another one?
What if, you, a person could make a motion to amend with regard to particulars that they're not in favor of, and that could be seconded, and that could be talked about, or-
You know, we, we talked about a, a position of, of code enforcement, is that a line item also in here?
It's not on the budget yet, or it's not on the salary bridge yet, Ryan, because the position doesn't exist yet. But there has been some money budgeted for it, so when that time comes, over the next couple of months, we'll decide who just want to be able to pay him, I will have to amend the salary bridge at that time.
So Jared, why did you, uh, you said you needed more time than?
Well, I agree, the mayor's assistant, five percent, I, I really didn't know about that for a while.
Yeah.
I just won't look at it.
Sure, I, I-
I don't know what I vote on, I vote on what I vote on.
I, I agree with you, one hundred percent.
My wife, Nancy Pelosi, I don't say, well, let's vote on it.
I can't quite hear her, you're not what, no, you're not like that, that's too lovely, cause what?
Just vote on it, and, and read what it says later.
Well, while you're studying that, let's go on with, uh, the first, uh, draft of the nine seventy-seven festival and event committee.
Very prepared this festival council's.
That's the first draft that, uh, that, uh, in the name of the discussion that will be going about next committee. Basically, uh, they would be responsible for control planning and managing the festivals, special events, and seven happening. It consists of five members, each of whom are appointed by a councilperson. The mayor's assistant, the back is their executive director.
I think this very well, uh, my question is, are, are they going to be set up in districts, right? The other boards are being put?
Each councilman will appoint a member of-
From their district, or they have to be from the city limits?
I would say in the city limits, but not within our district.
City limits. That's up to you. Oh, I know, that's, that's what I'm asking, the board here.
As, as things vary, if somebody has a body. I know we have, this has been kind of a bringer for me because I know we have, uh, business elders in the city, if you're honest, that in the city still pay taxes through their business, I, you know, so. And sometimes it's hard to find people in the city that's willing to do it.
Well, it's each councilman, like, you know, I, I, I forgive the all the authority.
Do you believe what?
Yeah, right.
Right, I guess that's a discussion, trying to get here with the council. Yes, but your feelings on it?
I think there was like one person in the Christmas thing involved last year, who has, has a business in town that works really, really hard for the Christmas, so, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, as I said, there was several of us on the, uh, Christmas committee that they don't live in city limits at all. Several of them, I think. And they put in a lot of hard work, a lot.
Because it's going to be community involvement, it's just not city involvement.
Of course, I mean, it's, they're part of the city, they're part of the county, and we're part of the city, and we're part of the county too. So, you know, I, I think each one of us up here can appoint somebody, no matter who's in the county.
That's what they just need to appoint somebody, committed.
And I think we're all, well enough, and have enough.
We all, we all, if we appoint somebody, you're, you know, you have to explain that to your others.
So this is just the first reading.
That's just the first draft.
Yeah, this is just the first reading, and so I think-
You could even say like three people, or five, or ten of them.
Yeah, I mean, let's just table it and we'll put it on the next meeting, please.
And, and it's, and it's really, if you want to have a festival committee, if you don't want to have a festival committee.
We might.
That's, you know, so that's gives you some thought.
My thought too was on the assistant to the mayor shall act as the executive director. I don't know if it needed to be that specific, or maybe, um, the mayor shall appoint, that the mayor's appointment would be the executive director. Wouldn't necessarily have to be the assistant, because that ties you down for that person doing it. And the next person, I don't know, six years from now, let's say, if somebody new and they're like not really good at it, but somebody else would be better, so. That's just something to think about too.
I'll, I'll put in whatever you want. My thinking was that a paid position would have to respond to be responsible for volunteer, that's all I was thinking. And that is, you know, the, you know, receive or distribute or provide these funds.
Or you could put the assistant to the mayor or designate me, something like that, maybe. Cause I understand they're thinking, you know, you want it to be a responsible person, but.
Somebody that basically you, where you're paid, and that's the one that's responsible, makes the bank answer you.
Okay.
That's, that's, that is my thinking.
So we'll think about this and bring it back in two weeks.
Thank you.
All right, transfer request from the golf fund, within the golf fund.
In your package, Eric, Sean, maybe you, uh, you transfer some money. It's just out of my budget, from one line to the other. Obviously, everything that we're transferring is having to make money on it. And we need to supply the place to make money, inventory concessions. More play means more fuel for the golf carts. Uh, more scrambles mean more part-time help to work. See, the chemical comes from half the reset golf course every year. When we get six inches of rain during nine years, so we get that problem solved.
What's a, uh, I'm just asking, why do you need to transfer to, to bank charges?
Credit card, you should be.
Oh, credit card, okay, I didn't know.
I would have that too.
I move that we transfer the monies with the golf budget.
Jack made a motion to, Jack made a motion to approve the, the claim here to-
I'll second his motion.
Connie seconded it, all in favor? Motion carries five oh.
Barb, just so you know, Barb, it's a total of forty-four thousand, four hundred dollars worth of transfer.
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay, Cobb Panther red, rent distribution.
Okay, I also put a letter that I, a little memo I authored into your packets, I hope you've read it. The short version is, is that the repayment back to the redevelopment commission for the Cobb Panther that was built some eight or nine years ago, that debt has been fulfilled, so, uh, the, the military currently pays the city twelve thousand, five hundred dollars a month for use of the Cobb Panther. Those funds are set up to where eleven hundred dollars goes to the airport, sixty-four hundred goes to the golf course, and five thousand a month goes to the redevelopment commission. Again, now that the redevelopment commission, uh, debt has been paid off, there's five thousand additional dollars that need to be distributed according to your wishes. So, I, I'd had a conversation with our airport manager, Ryan Curry, and their board president. Uh, they were fine, they would like to split the additional five thousand dollars between their aviation fund, in hopes that they would be better prepared to have matching grant funds should they come down the road, instead of relying on TIF all the time. Their argument, of course, is Cobb Panther is on aviation property, which if it wasn't there, they would be getting more income from their farm lease. Uh, and then it would be my recommendation that the council put the other twenty-five hundred into any number of funds, whether it's our festival fund for events at, uh, Tripton Park, whether it's to start throwing more money into the Walnut Street Fund, whether it's to put money in our soon-to-be-new housing study fund, whatever it might be, I think it'd be appropriate to split those, but again, it's completely up to council, if you have a different or better ideas, and you tell me where to put the additional five thousand.
How much is any of the festival fund that we operate in this year?
You, uh, it's thirty-seven thousand or so, but again, all that money comes from, you know, the, the city council and property tax dollars, so if we could use some of these rent funds to increase the overall cash balance of the fund, it could certainly come in handy down the road. And again, as you well know, we've made a commitment to, to do Walnut Street here, which is about two point eight million that we need to come up with a couple of years down the road, so any dollars that we can start putting into that fund would be a help down the road as well.
Do we have any money in that fund yet?
Not to date, no.
So twenty-five hundred dollars, though, would be our half. It just seems like it would...
It's not for, uh...
Yes, it is, okay. Yeah.
I mean, I, I think the Walnut Street project is the biggest, looking forward, uh, north Vernon, I think that's the biggest project that we have coming up, and we definitely need to do that, and we have funds ready to do it.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, that's going to be a massive doing effort from TIF and the city and utilities when that time comes, uh, but in the meantime, there, there are some...
You know it's coming.
Yes, and there will be some preliminary engineering work and some things to pay for, so to start building that fund. My plan is also to move, uh, fifty percent of the state distribution for motor vehicle every month in there, uh, we'll probably have to start taking, uh, you know, some of the money that we were spending for community crossroads will probably have to be dialed down and put in there, so it's going to be an effort to come up with that kind of money. So, I, I mean, you know, I told Ryan, you know, council could see fit to take all five thousand, or he was welcome to come to a meeting and, and give a presentation and, and try to get the whole five thousand for the aviation. Uh, but again, we've, we've got question marks up in the air now on Tripton, and what it might cost to run that place, and unforeseen expenses. Um, I thought that if we put twenty-five hundred into some sort of fund that the council controlled, whether that be festival or whatever, or...
Can we put it in the rainy day fund?
You can put it in rainy day for now and decide what to do with it later, absolutely. Yeah, and the me, and I could start putting the twenty-five hundred a month into rainy day.
I don't know buildings.
I agree with you, that person's allocated on a whim, you know, that...
You have to think about it.
Is there a motion?
Is there a motion to remove it to rainy day fund?
I'll second that statement.
Jack made a motion, put that money in the rainy day fund, and you seconded it?
Just so I, and, but you meet the twenty-five hundred, and you're fine with the aviation taken their half.
Just on their property.
Okay.
Is this, uh, per month ongoing, or just the one time?
It's been, uh, it was twenty-five thousand a month when they built it, it's been twelve thousand, five hundred a month for the last couple of years.
Five thousand you're talking about?
Every month.
That's the new rent, basically.
They're, no, I was going to slap, no, the, the, the rent continues to be twelve thousand, five hundred a month.
Oh.
Five thousand of that was being sent back to TIF every month to repay the original debt.
So that's paid off.
The other distribution will remain the same.
Okay.
It's completely covered. Who seconded that? I apologize.
I seconded that. I have no problem with it, I want to make a statement, I just don't want to just spend the twenty-five hundred for everything, because that's easy to do, food and rainy day, and all that, I don't want to pay about a dollar a spin. I want to make sure we know what we're doing.
I agree with you, Jerry, but, I mean, we'll decide that, we'll take all five of us to decide that, how it's funded.
I will be all in favor.
Ah, you're all in favor?
I'm just curious about it. Uh, okay, before we go any further, you know, you talked about, uh, why the five percent, I want to, about the mayor's assistant. I want, I just want to mention that she helps him a lot, like, with cutting the festivals and things like that, that's why she's doing a lot of extra things, uh, we've been pretty busy on. This game fest, this, uh, Christmas in the city, things like that, you know, so I, I just want to mention that.
I agree with you, Mayor, I've, I've, uh, been, done some things with your assistant, and I think she's done an excellent job, and so, and she's done extra hard work, and...
A lot of extra hard work.
She did that, thank you. I think she, I think the five percent is very reasonable.
Thank you. Uh, additional, uh, any additional new business, uh, anybody? Cat?
I don't know, Mayor.
Russell? Baldwin?
No.
I've got a little thing, Mayor. We're working today on the closeout of the CCMG project that we're done, and having change order ready to present, and a deduct change order. We have one more fact we didn't do, the signal loop up at Poplar State Street. We were going to have to bill them out and resell them. We didn't do that, part of the reason why is because the state now is doing their part. So, this is the deduction of twenty-five hundred dollars, allows us to continue with the closeout.
Baldwin, let's start twenty-five hundred bucks.
To mill, that was the line item for the payout, to mill them out and resell them, it's twenty-five hundred. We held them back, and they didn't go. So this is the reduction, this is the deduction, twenty-five hundred. Change order, so it's a reading to that project.
Jerry made a motion, I'll second.
Alright, Jerry made a motion on that, Brian seconded, all in favor? Motion carries five oh.
Okay.
Alright, Chief?
I'm taking a moment to get this microphone, uh, on Halloween night, next Wednesday, we will shut down Jackson Street, uh, just from five to nine o'clock, just to keep it safe on Sweet Street, but we don't want to shut down Secret, so public announcement. Shut down Jackson, just this section right here between Main and...
At nine o'clock?
Oh, about nine.
What day is that?
Next Wednesday.
Halloween.
Any hours of five through eight for the two of you?
Right. Is there one of the videos?
May I give you one, if you'd say?
Yes, I do. Can I say this respectfully? I mean, if, if I take the mayor's assistant, so the difference between her putting out, and three percent, which would be standard, and the five percent the mayor asked for, is about eight dollars a pay, and the difference in Robbins is thirty-five dollars a pay. I would ask that council revisit this ordinance before we have to schedule a special meeting, and we pay out five hundred dollars for the per diem, over eight dollars, and we get this rectified tonight somehow, please.
Is that every two weeks or every week?
Two weeks.
That's for paychecks, so it'd be seventy dollars a month, or eighty, sixty dollars a month?
Eighty dollars a pay, times twenty-six pays two hundred and eight dollars for the year.
Okay.
That's the difference between a three percent increase and a five percent increase, so I, I just would hope that we could resolve this without the fee of four hundred and twenty-five dollars per diem charged to have a special council meeting. Come on, let's do this, we can... Put our heads together and resolve this.
She do a lot more, what can't be located for it? I know, shut up.
Or I'll take recommendations for changes, and we'll all hold a special meeting.
Well, they're thinking, I, I didn't want to say that I was out to the park the other night, and they put up the new lights out there, and it is great, I mean, it's almost like daylight out there now. So...
Last week, and they were...
Yeah.
If you, if you wanted to avoid... If you wanted to avoid a... If you wanted to avoid a special meeting, uh, a person can make a motion to amend those or that item in the salary ordinance, and then have discussion about the amendment. If you're looking for a compromise or... For example, someone could say, I, I moved to amend, um, the executive assistant to the mayor from five percent to four point nine nine, whatever you think. Or if there's just one salary that you're hung up on, or someone who may want to move to amend that one particular line item, rather than... Otherwise, it's my understanding that has to be passed by November first, and we would have to have a series of special meetings until we arrive at the salary ordinance. Are you ready to vote? No, no, I, no, I'm just, I'm just offering you a, a, an option to avoid. Or someone, anyone's changed their mind, they could make a motion to revisit the issue as presented.
John, page three. Looking at right now, uh, under, uh, is somebody there, third line down, is that a? Uh, one, two, three, four lines down, what, what percentage is that?
A three percent?
A three percent, then what's underneath the three?
Twelve.
Twelve percent?
Yeah. That coincides with that person recently being named a foreman, that comes with an extra dollar fifty an hour. So a person could be named foreman, and if they make, you know, twenty dollars an hour, never named foreman, they're going to get whatever percent that increase might be, regardless if we increased, but you've changed the metrics or not. The increase would come in the form of the promotion.
And the other, it's coming straight down from that, the one that's eight percent?
And then a ten?
An eight and a ten, what, is that part of the matrix?
That's part of the revised matrix, that you directly made a change to starting pay, so you're going to, similar to a lot of firefighters getting a thirteen and fifteen percent raise last year, and the police getting those sort of raises two years ago, when we bumped up the front number on the matrix to attract better quality applicants and to help to retain better applicants, clearly, you can't raise the front number and have somebody to start making more than somebody's been here for a year, so it all kind of flowed together, and so to change the utility matrix, similar to what we did the other two, because you couldn't see that one year hit, where some people have been here just a few years, are getting a larger-than-normal increase.
So, the, the entire salary thing, what is the total percentage going to be in recent, I mean, it's got to be more than two percent, but do you have any idea where we're at, totally on the increment?
It's under four, if you took everybody in, uh, exposure to three, actually. Because again, in this scenario, those who are making the most money are getting the smallest increases. A lot of them are at one percent, or in some cases, less than one percent. So overall, on the budget, there's not as big of an increase as you might think. And all these numbers still fall within the budget that was approved by council last month.
Last month, we didn't see the individuals under...
Two weeks ago, I did not have my handwritten notes on there, right, so now you're seeing the increase, the, the official copy to get signed, for the record, does not have names of the employees next to them, and it does not have percent increases in every issue. That was just for your review. Here's what my original looks like for your signature, so no names, no increases. I actually then attached two in, a copy of the police matrix, a copy of the fire matrix, and a copy of the utility matrix, so if there are any promotions, then we can do the adjustments without coming back to council for an amendment to the salary ordinance, so the one that counts here has all those matrix, matrices, excuse me, attached to it.
I know you can't speak, you know, only, but a lot of you, this is what this year will be, this is what's...
No, absolutely not. Unless you allow them to edit, revise the matrix again, but the ma, the matrix has now been revised, so...
Jerry wants a question from, sorry, Jerry.
He wanted to reassure him that those increases in utilities would not be that much again next year.
So how many of these are, are we stuck on here, so we can get through this? I think we got a dead silence here. Just two, I heard, two, three? Well, I don't think anyone knows, but right now, we can, a proper motion would be to revisit as presented, or amend, if presented, or, or adjourned. And you can amend it in one, two, three, or fifty particulars.
Jerry, you have any more questions? Brian?
Forty. Can't hear you, I'm just asking, what, if they've got recommendations for changes or have they been looking at it, if they're accepting it or whatever.
There are other motions, you can take a motion, take a, like a restroom break. If you wanna stand up and stretch, you can do that. That's a frivolous motion here.
I thank you, I'm.
I think the difference is some people have matrix, some do not. You know, we know from year fifteen to sixteen, it's a big jump, or that it's small increases, so I don't think there's way enough universal matrix across every employee.
I think most of, when I look at this, if one is involved in the matrix, the moves were made according to the matrix or to keep the matrix up to date.
Right.
Outside the matrix, you know, I, I don't see what we're gonna mess with, do very much with the matrix.
What I'm saying is there's probably only a handful that are outside the matrix, isn't it? The police, fire, and utilities are on a matrix, all other employees are not. Which would be clerk's office, mayor's office, record, department, street department, golf, I mean, there's a lot that are not on a matrix.
And even without the being on matrix, we still try to keep them balanced within, I think the races and stuff, I mean, we don't, they too extraordinary with them, and we don't put the others or.
Well, you got, you probably don't even want my opinion on the matrix, but what I've never liked is, is that if you just say everybody gets a two percent raise, then a guy, I mean, who works his tail off pushing along, or gets the same raise as a guy sitting in the truck racing a polar hog, and I think department heads ought to be able to reward their employees that are going above and beyond. Now with the police and the fire and utilities, you can be promoted to sergeant or lieutenant when you get a raise that way. Or you can take your certification test and move up in water, wastewater, so there are other ways to increase your pay. For those not on the matrix, we're just gonna rely on a somewhat random number, and again, the reason we kinda went to a one, two, three percent was the gap between our highest paid employees and our lowest paid was continuing to increase every year. And I thought it was the council's wishes to decrease that gap, not to continue to increase it.
And we did that last year, Russell came back and made us change it because all this. He didn't.
Back to the certification, I think, they wanted theirs to show that when they pass the test, that it reflected on our matrix and not just the standard one, two, three percent. So, I don't know that there's a right way to do it, but we've, we've kinda fallen into that the police, fire, and utilities have their own matrix, and the rest of us are more on a one, two, three percent. Again, in some cases, uh, more, in some cases, less.
I'd make a motion. Anybody not involved in the matrix should not have a rate higher than three percent.
I'll second that.
You're saying any, any employee that's not police, fire, or street can ever get above a three percent raise? I mean, that's, that's, I mean, is that what the motion is?
If you're not involved in the matrix.
Which would be anybody other than police, fire, or utility?
Utilities are part of the matrix, too.
I just wanna say that aside, it's police, fire, and utility.
So that would take in this, the, uh,
Park, motion needs to be seconded.
Uh, Jackson. The Brian motion, Jackson, that we're discussing.
That's not really.
So it'd be the park department.
So if you made fourteen dollars an hour, you maxed out your raise, you'd get a forty-three cent raise every year. At fourteen dollars and fifty cents an hour.
Well, I'm gonna say something, you're really, you're really, you're really hurting my system, because she's worked very hard for just a few little cents that she's trying to make.
I'm just saying, a three percent raise on fourteen dollars and fifty cents is forty-three cents. And then you're gonna get forty-three one year, forty. I don't have, I don't have an answer for that. I think they can worry for what they do.
I agree. Because she's.
But we got a, we, we have a, I definitely have a.
There's a motion, I know there's a motion on four, but I'm just telling you, she's, she's put forth all, a lot of work on these businesses.
I disagree with anybody, but I think they all are exceptional employees, and we're not trying to, we're trying to be fair with everyone. And.
It's gonna be hard if the street department could tell them that the utility probably got a twelve percent raise and they're stuck at a three. Or a six, twelve percent raise and they're stuck.
Is it somebody one percent now, two?
Right, you can never get more than three percent.
They can never get more than.
Does that, does that motion for this, this upcoming year, or is this?
Yes.
I mean, I provide this. For this budget, not forever.
I, yeah, I don't.
Just for this budget to get things moving along here.
Next year, we're gonna be caught up on all the matrix and all the adjustments that we're gonna be making, and it we should be able to constrain across the board.
I don't, I can't speak of next year, I don't know about next year.
Any more discussion?
If I may. Well, I just wanna be sure, I, I mean, I understand the motion is no one gets more than three, so are we falling back, does that mean everybody gets a three? Because that's gonna cost a heck of a lot of money, which I've gotten fun of it.
Except everyone except for the people involved in the matrix.
But if everyone not on the matrix gets a three percent raise, you just.
Maximum three percent.
Okay, so.
I mean, if you're, if you've got a five or a ten or.
As presented, but not to exceed three.
Okay.
So those that are at one, we're not taking up the three?
No.
Okay.
I mean, we are helping out the insurance this year.
All right. Couple of questions, all in favor? Okay, all opposed. One, two.
Three, two.
Three, two.
All right. Uh. So now, now it'd be the passage as amended. You pass the amendment, now you need to pass the salary ordinance as amended.
All right, I need to, I'll make a motion if we pass the salary ordinance as amended.
I'll second that.
If Brian made a motion to pass it as amended, Jack seconded it, all in favor? Three, four, all opposed. Two. Three, two. All right, let's pay the claims. I'm sorry, let's go ahead, Jerry, you got a question?
I just didn't have a question, if you would have a nine, one second. Uh, as part of the jail committee, I, we have a meeting this week, I'd like to clarify members, so to speak. I know the city's been gracious in offering, uh, a property value, a property deal. Is that a go or no go? I'm hearing the brewer bill, the factories not gonna build if the city gives it up, is there any truth man? Can you speak about that, we have a meeting on Thursday, I'd like to be able to clarify.
City's offer remains open for this year.
Okay. Is, is that?
It has to be with growing.
Okay.
To answer your question, yes, if that, if that jail built there, the factory's not gonna build.
I thought originally, and I, I guess it's a two-part question, sorry. Uh, I guess originally that they were asked before that offer was made, if they would mind if the jail was there, and they didn't mind if the jail was gonna be there. Is that not true?
I'm not gonna involve that.
Okay, well, that's what we were told originally.
They told me to go, they told me to look for some property companies. But I'm not selling that, I'm just trying to.
Okay, well, that answered my question, I appreciate it, because we have a meeting on Thursday, just wanted to clarify. You know, some people that, to me, it was a gracious offer and to help amend a wound, just doesn't seem to go away, but you know, it's kinda like, they said, sorry, but, you know, they thought that, and I'm leaving the meeting, that they were okay with it being in jail there, so then I heard it, but I guess it can't be everybody, so I'll take that information, thank you for listening. Thank you.
Now, let's put it.
I'll make that motion.
Trent made motion for the claims.
I can second the motion.
I can second it, all in favor? Who's carried five oh? Anybody else have anything to say to the attorney?
Yeah. I think he did a good job, I think he needs paid, not the same as you paid us, pay you. And when we're gonna turn that petition down, I'm not gonna help you.
Anybody else? Okay, make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that.
Did anybody make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Brian seconded, all in favor? Five oh, thank you.